Good evening and welcome to the May 20th, 24, City of Pasco Council Regular Meeting. The Council thanks you for being a part of your city government. At regular meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets for those following online are available at www. The city's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. For those here in person, the packets or the meeting packets are available on the small table as you enter to your right. The meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting is available at the city's website. Lastly, we do have our interpreter here, Mr. Jaime. Hand up in the back to my right, to your left if you're looking. If you need Spanish interpretive services, reach out to Jaime, he can assist you. We typically have headsets. But yeah, with that, if you have comments, you may submit comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And of course, with tonight being a regular meeting, there is opportunity for public comment later. With that, Ms. Deputy City Clerk, is that your title? Okay, it's usually Crystal, but we'll go more formal. Ms. Deputy City Clerk, can you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Barajas.
Present.
Blaisdell.
Present.
Grim.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Milne.
Here.
Serrano.
Here.
Seven councilmembers present, Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all can stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on to item number four, which is Consent Agenda. Now, all items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by City Council and will be enacted by a roll call vote in one motion, as listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council member or council members, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda and considered separately. So, we have a total of five items. It's going to be A through E. The first item is Item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for the May 6th and May 13th Meetings. Item B is Bills and Communications Approving Total Claims and the Total Amount, approving claims in the total amount of $7,425,939, and a write-off totaling $50,539. And then the motion will be to approve that write-off and approve that dollar value. Item C is Resolution Number 4451, Bid Award for Court Street and Road 68 Intersection Improvements, and the motion would be to approve the Resolution Number 4451, awarding bid number 19043 for this Court Street and Court Street and Road 68 Intersection Improvements Project, Ellison Earthworks LLC. Item D is Resolution Number 4452, Approving Collection Services with Washington Collectors Tri-Cities Inc., Collection Agency Contract. And again, that motion will be to approve that contract. Item E is Resolution Number 4453, Rave Foundation Footsall Partnership, and the motion will be to approve Resolution Number 4453, Authorizing the City Manager to Sign the Memorandum of Agreement between Rave Foundation and the City of Pasco for the Installation Two Footsall Courts in City Parks. With that...
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Got a motion, then a second by Ms. Blaisdell. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no lights, hearing none, let's do a roll call for Ms. Deputy.
Councilmember Grim.
Yes.
Harpster.
Yes.
Peralas.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Blaisdell.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Excellent. We'll move on now to item number three, which is Proclamation, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. We have Public Works Week proclamation. We got Ms. Sarah. I will read the proclamation. I will note that we have, of the Public Works Department, we have Director Marie Sarah. We have the Deputy Director of Operations, John Mian. We have Construction Manager Kent McHugh. I'm just trying to pulse and make sure I'm getting everyone. Hopefully, we got everyone. Operations Managers, Tom Holmes, Erica Whitala, and Jason Etzler. Then our Senior Engineers, Juan Loyola, Brittany Whitfield, and I'm gonna probably miss this one up, Puna or Punya Clark. With that, I will read this. We will take a short recess, too. I will note the lovely hard hats my kids are gonna fight. Unfortunately, they're not very protective, but you know, they have hard heads. I'll blame that on my wife. With that, I'll read this, and then I'll present the proclamation. Y'all, you can make some comments as well. But I do want to make sure for the photo ops and that sort of thing, we have plenty of time. So with that, Ms. Sarah, can you all just head to the podium? I'll read it to y'all there, or I'll read it to you from here to there. Anyone that was listed, anyone else that's a part of this, you know, that I did not list, certainly, you know, come on up. Does that mean, Mr. Maff, if you want to stay and receive? Fair enough. That's your call. With that, I guess I'll read from the formal, you know, paper version instead of the electronic, and then, like I said, I'll hand it to you. If you want to make some comments and reception, that's welcome, too. So we got Public Works Week, May 19 through 25, 2024. Whereas Public Works Professionals Focus on Infrastructure, Facilities, and Services that are vital, of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and the well-being of the city of Pasco. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of Public Works Professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, salt, waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest of our residents, civic leaders, and children of Pasco to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works Programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. And now therefore, I, Pete Serrano, Mayor of Pasco, Washington, hereby proclaim this week of May 19 through 25, 2024 as Public Works Week. I urge all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works Professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make in protecting our health and our safety and advancing our quality of life. With that, thank you very much for all you do. I will tell you this, I've had the pleasure of getting to know many of you. I remember when I first came down to chat with Mr. Mian and his staff. It was in response to their response to our city goals several years back. They actually went that extra level, adopted some goals for their department to make sure that they were implementing what they could touch on our goal sheet. And I was very impressed with the willingness and desire to not only just serve the city of Pasco, improve quality of life, but also to take direction and say, okay, this is the goal of council, this is how we touch on it. And it certainly was very moving and meaningful, and I've had the pleasure to come back down and will try to get back down again. So with that, Ms. Sarah, if you've got anything, or anyone?
Mayor, before, I just want to, first of all, acknowledge that this is an amazing team, and also discuss a little bit about the selection of Ms. Sarah as the permanent Public Works Director. She did a phenomenal job during the interim service to the position, trying to juggle both doing her other role and being the director of the department. She's got a lot of support and really solid backing. We did a national search to look for a director, and she absolutely rose to the top. So, very proud of this selection and wish her a lot of luck and longevity in the position.
Likewise. But she doesn't need luck. She's young enough that longevity should be given.
Mayor and councilmembers, we appreciate being recognized in this week and joining the rest of Public Works Departments within the state, but also the nation, being recognized and making the public aware of what Public Works Teams do every day. We try, for the most part, to be invisible, and when we're invisible, you don't hear a lot about us. Recently, we have a lot of projects, so we're a little bit more visible, but ultimately trying to advance the quality of life for all, which is actually the theme for this year. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm guessing that's, I mean, if anyone else wants to speak on that, you're welcome to. Don't feel obliged to. Seeing the blank stares, that my children will get me if I put them on the spot, I will come down and hand this off. We'll do, John will do some photos, I'm sure. And if you have family or other folks that want to be involved, if we need a recess, let me know. I'm just looking, I'm guessing that's a no, but we'll get the photos, and if you need a recess, let me know. Thank you again for coming down. I guess Bob the Builder's gonna run the meeting from here on out. Good news is, with my technical capabilities, this type of hat should be adequate, because you want me as far away from any construction site as possible. With that, we're gonna move on to item number six, which is Public Comments. The public may address council on any item unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. It is not, its purpose is not to provide for the venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will be normally limited three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and city or county of residence into the microphone before providing your comments. With that, we have our timer over here at three minutes. Crystal will be running that. Public comments now open. Ms. Mahoney, I believe. Think I got your name right?
Is that on?
It is. If you want to pull it down, it might be easier. Speak into it. Perfect.
My name's Mary Mahoney, 5017 West Pearl. My residence is in the floodplain. My comments made 5:13:24 in the minutes. Need correcting and some additions. All following comments are premised on RCW 42.56 for Public Records. To the city of Pasco, please provide permits issued to the city of Pasco from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, allowing for the city of Pasco to take, poach, displace, and/or kill eight floodplain American bald eagles that used to reside in their floodplain habitat at 52nd and Pearl. Also to the city of Pasco, please provide permits issued from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, allowing the city of Pasco to avoid the provisions of the Migratory Bird Treaty Act within the floodplain. Please provide an environmental impact statement as it pertains to the floodplain with reference to the floodplain American bald eagles and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act II. Please provide, from the Pasco City Council Meeting on March 18, 2024, Resolution Number 4432, RH2 Engineering Incorporated for Professional Services Agreement for Water System Plan Project Number 24-593. Please provide a map clarifying the purple lines on Page 35. Also provide a start date for the project number 24-593, and environmental impact statement as it pertains to the floodplain for Clean Water Act and more. Three, regarding the Pasco City Council Meeting on April 1, 2019, the video of that meeting has been deleted from the Pasco Archives. Please provide a video of that meeting. Please provide a termination agreement between the Tri-City Animal Control and WSU contract. On 4/1/19, Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr stated a termination agreement would be provided. No termination agreement has been provided. Please provide, if due process language has been included in the potentially dangerous and dangerous animal ordinances. On 4/1/19, Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr stated, "There would be no due process, no due process." This is so important. "Included in the potentially dangerous and dangerous animal ordinances for all of Kennewick, Pasco, and Richland. My comments are for the record and to put the city of Pasco on notice for those violations." Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Looks like we gotta race. We'll take the front row. Go for it.
Hello, my name is Zoe, and I'm a resident of Kennewick. And I'd like to share a few facts about the process of genocide and how it applies to Israel and its US ally. Noam Chomsky famously wrote that "Education is not memorizing that Hitler killed 6 million Jews, but it's understanding how millions of ordinary Germans were convinced that it was required." The Ten Stages of Genocide is a formula developed by Dr. Gregory Stanton, Vice President of the International Association of Genocide Scholars, for how a society can engage in genocide. Genocide cannot be committed by an individual or a small group. It takes the cooperation of a large number of people and the state. Genocidal process starts with the prejudice that continues to grow, and by knowing the stages of genocide, citizens are better equipped to identify the warning signs and stop the process. The Ten Stages of Genocide are classification, symbolization, discrimination, dehumanization, organization, polarization, preparation, persecution, extermination, and denial. I'll share the first five, and how they apply to Israel. Classification. Several UN Special Repitores States and Human Rights Organizations have recognized Israel's policy of oppression, segregation, and discrimination by ethnicity as apartheid. Second, the symbolization. A color-coded ID card system identifies Palestinians and restricts where they can live, their freedom of movement, access to services, and their voting rights. Discrimination. Palestinians are viewed as an undesirable element and treated as inferior citizens or security threats. Dehumanization. Israeli government officials have publicly referred to Palestinians as monsters, human animals, barbaric, and pre-modern. Soldiers have called Palestinians terrorists, roaches, and rats on social media. Organization. Military checkpoints are used to restrict the movement of Palestinians. Palestinians of all ages, including children, are tried and persecuted in military courts and prisons, where they are often held without charge. And my friend will share the final five stages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annalisa Ely. I'm a resident of Kennewick. According to Dr. Stanton, who studied these stages, genocide is a process that develops in ten stages that are predictable but not inexorable. At each stage, preventative measures can stop it. The sixth stage, polarization. The government broadcasts propaganda to turn the populace against the group. Hasbara is a public diplomacy technique used by Israel to cultivate a positive public image by controlling the information presented to viewers. Hasbara is so effective that polling in November 23 of 2023 found that 58% of Israelis believed that the IDF was using too little firepower in Gaza. In January of 24, 72% said aid into Gaza must be stopped until the hostages are released. Preparation. Official action to remove and relocate people. Since the 1948 Nakba, forced relocation of Palestinians has continued with expanding illegal Jewish settlements in the West Bank. Gaza has been described as an open-air prison by Israeli historian Ilan Pappe, with more than 2 million residents hemmed in. Eighth, persecution. Beginning of murders, theft of property, trial massacres. For the past two decades, Israel has had a policy it calls mowing the lawn in Gaza, periodically bombing the captive population in attempts to keep down resistance, followed by periods of calm, where survivors are left to clear the rubble and bury the dead. As the international community has looked the other way, it has given permission to Israel to escalate to the ninth step. Extermination. Wholesale elimination of the group. It is extermination and not murder, because the people are not considered human. According to Euromed, the Israeli army killed over 38,000 Palestinian civilians in the first 200 days of its attack, including 16,000 children. The final step is denial. The government denies it has committed any crime. The Israeli government and allies, including the US, deny their war crimes, even though all major human rights organizations, many UN Special Repitors, and hundreds of genocide scholars have all recognized the current action as a genocide. Over 100 city councils across the US have called for an end to the genocide. It is appropriate for the Pasco City Council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Ashford, and I'm a resident of Kennewick. The good news about the stages of genocide I just shared is the process is recognizable and can be prevented. The bad news is that we can see early signs of that process in our own nation. I've heard the same type of us-versus-them mentality and dehumanizing language from the mouths of powerful politicians, using terms like vermin to describe political dissidents, and claims that immigrants are terrorists and are poisoning the blood of the nation. What the US supports overseas comes back home. This phenomenon is not a new one. Amy Cusair, poet and politician from Martinique, and Holocaust survivor and political theorist Hannah Arendt, each wrote about it in the early 1950s. It's come to be known as the imperial boomerang, the thesis that governments that develop repressive techniques to control colonial territories will eventually deploy the same techniques domestically against their own citizens. According to both writers, the tactics and patterns of colonialization and of fascism are the same. They are rooted in the need for domination, extraction, and a goal to separate their victims from truth, support, family, land, culture, resources, and from oneself. Silence in the face of human rights violations committed by our federal government abroad normalizes and perpetuates human rights violations within our own nation. Silence in the face of violations of international law committed by our federal government abroad normalizes and perpetuates impunity for all perpetrators at home. This world of genocide, eco-side, femicide, and the complicity in the harming of children that we are experiencing today are the outcomes of conditions created by systems designed to maintain control. The circles of marginalized people in our own community and the circles of marginalized people in colonized Palestine are interconnected. You care about this community, or you wouldn't be on the City Council. It's time to arrest the progress of the stages of genocide, both at home and abroad. We won't get there by being silent. There's never been a more important time for everyone to bravely speak the truth. We're just asking you to join the many cities across the nation that have spoken out against the genocide in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amber Bruce. I'm a resident of Pasco. And as some of my friends have said, over 100 cities across the US have made resolutions calling for a ceasefire. Today, I'd like to read the text of a similar resolution that was enacted by the City Council of Bellingham, Washington, as an example of what this council could do. As a note, this resolution was put in place when the death toll was half its current number of at least 38,000 civilians. Now, it's mentioned as 17,000 in the text. So this resolution, supporting an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, Israel, and Palestine, begins, "Whereas the city of Bellingham believes in and advocates for the self-determination of all people, regardless of religion, race, or nationality. And whereas the city of Bellingham affirms that all human life is precious, and the targeting of civilians in armed conflict, no matter their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law. And whereas the city of Bellingham condemns racism in any form, and further condemns the rise of racist acts, antisemitism, Islamophobia, and targeted hate crimes against Jewish and Muslim communities that may occur or have occurred in our city, across the nation, and around the world. And whereas, the armed violence in this conflict has claimed the lives of over 17,000 people and wounded thousands more in Israel, Gaza, and Palestine, including children and United States citizens. And whereas, hundreds of thousands of lives will continue to be at imminent risk if a ceasefire is not achieved and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And whereas, the United States government holds immense diplomatic power to engage all parties directly involved in this conflict, to end the current violence, address the root causes of this crisis, and develop solutions that create a clear pathway to peace and justice. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Bellingham, that the city of Bellingham supports the proposed US Congress Resolution HR 786, and joins other cities in the United States that have already done so, in urging the current administration of the United States to immediately call for and facilitate de-escalation of this conflict, including an immediate ceasefire, to urgently end the current violence, a release of all hostages and prisoners, and promptly send and facilitate the entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza and all other affected areas of this armed conflict. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Washington State Congressional delegation, United States President Joe Biden, and Vice President Kamala Harris, urging the administration to take immediate action. Please consider introducing and voting on a similar resolution. Thank you."
Thank you. Do we have any further public comments? Mr. Cortinas, or ma'am in the blue shirt?
Good evening. My name is Malin Bergstrom. I'm a Pasco resident and longtime business owner, family business, Bergstrom Aircraft. And I am an aviation lover and an amateur historian. And I am now a part of a small but mighty organization that's hoping to bring the 100-year celebration to Pasco to commemorate 1926, first flight of commercial airmail. It's coming up quickly, 2026. Very brief history, folks that aren't already familiar, but Pasco was put on the map in 1926, April 6, to be exact, when a small biplane took off from Pasco and flew to Elko, Nevada, thus completing the first commercial airmail flight in the entire United States. Airmail had been carried by aircraft prior to that, but it was a function of the postal office or the government. And in this case, private citizens, Mr. Varney, was the first to carry airmail in the entire country and be paid for it. So, we want to make sure that that history is shared with everyone and continue to keep Pasco's unique and very interesting history in the forefront. Have...
Ms. Bergstrom, I understand you brought six copies of the packet. Do you happen to have a seventh?
I don't.
Okay. So I think for now, staff will send it digitally, probably tomorrow, as we won't have enough to go around full body, unless we can... unless we can get someone at a break at some point to make a seventh copy.
Miscount on my part.
It's all good.
I do have an artifact that I brought with me, and this is the original Chamber of Commerce commemorative cachet that was designed and embossed, and it's a leather pouch. And it was awarded to the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, from the Seattle Chamber of Commerce, on April sixth, nineteen twenty-six. So this artifact was kept in our community all that time, and a local family has donated it to the Pasco Aviation Museum. So it's now on display with several other photos and information that's in those packets. So hoping that we can have the city participate right from the very beginning of this endeavor to make sure that everyone knows what a great contribution Pasco made to aviation and our local history.
Thank you. Mr. Hastings?
Colin Hastings, Pasco Chamber of Commerce and Pasco resident. So just to dovetail on what Malin shared with you, I wanted to at least prep the city council and city staff that will be seeking the support of the city for this endeavor. A little bit more history. Fifty years ago, forty-eight years ago, we celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of the first commercial airmail flight. And it was a big to-do, just like it was the first time. If you ever see the old photos in the packet there, you'll see that thousands of Pasco residents showed up for this monumental event, same thing in nineteen seventy-six. And it incorporated United Airlines because Varney Airlines, then not much longer after, turned into United Airlines. So we can say that the birth of United Airlines is here in Pasco. Moving forward, our intent is to engage United Airlines and have their support again fifty years later, as well as, as Malin had mentioned too, that we have a committee that's formed, and its members include a lot of people, aviation enthusiasts from the community, but also the City of, or excuse me, Chamber of Commerce, and the Port of Pasco, Tri-Cities. And we're looking to recreate some of those great activities and have an educational component as well, too. So the planning is never too early to start. And quite frankly, one of the items that we want to do is get a commemorative stamp from the post office created. They did forty-eight years ago. We intend to do that again. Funny sidebar story about that. You have to mail in the request. You can't email the request. But we got that process started as well as we'll be seeking support from the city by way of a resolution, either that week or for the whole year declaring twenty twenty-six the birthplace of US airmail. As well as our plans include probably having a lot of folks coming in from out of town, too. And so we'd like to seek some lodging tax funds if available as well, too. So really just team this up to seek your support moving forward and would really welcome your involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And thanks for the heads up. Like you said, never too early.
I wasn't around in nineteen twenty-six.
Mr. Cortinas, I know you got halfway there.
If I could give you some copies here.
Sure thing.
There's seven here.
Alrighty. Chris will go ahead and run in from when he speaks.
Dave Cortinas, four eleven West Clark, Executive Director for the Latin Business Association. Well, we just finished one of the largest and most successful Cinco de Mayo downtown Pasco. According to the numbers that we were given by the Parks and Recreation, it exceeded past numbers and everything went very well. We were very happy that we were asked to join the Parks and Rec in helping with the planning and the organizationing of the Cinco de Mayo. Largest number of booths, largest number of parade entries. Matter of fact, the parade was still going and they were already exiting off. And so it was just a very successful. Other than the weather, we had a very rainy Sunday, but we still finished off our entire entertainment list. And people just kept coming on Sunday that we just had to continue. So we thought it was very successful, very enjoyable working with Jesse and the Parks and Rec staff. And so we've been asked to come back and help with the Fiery Food Festival. I emailed you earlier and want to thank Adam and Jesse for the opportunity to work with them and continue working with their staff. We know that they have a very busy summer. And so we want to be able to throw our talents and expertise and working with them and making the Fiery Food Festival. As you can see, we've added a multicultural festival to the fiery foods. And we think by our ask today, we'll be able to bring Bosnians and Salvadoranians and Argentinans and from all over the state to come to the fiery food multicultural festival. I think it's time that we recognize all these diverse community that we have here in Pasco and allow them to come out and share their entertainment, share their cultural, share their fiery food, and to be able to work together on this festival. I'm not going to go over the whole list, but our ask is for a thirty-thousand-dollar investment to the Parks and Recreation Fund and Budget so that we can be able to get more heads and beds coming in from out of town and to be able to invite people to come down to downtown Pasco, Peanuts Park. Thank you.
Thank you. I think just to staff, I know we received that email earlier. To the extent that that's treated as a formal request, just let us know. Or if there's a particular process that Mr. Cortinas in the LBA needs to follow to kind of cross tease dots at dot eyes.
Thanks, Mayor. I think at this point it would require a budget adjustment to make that happen. So we'd need direction from council to pursue that.
And I guess this is to you and somewhat to Mr. Cortinas. What's our time? I mean, we're talking September, so that's four months, just shy of four months.
Sooner is better.
My guess is sooner is rather than later.
Yeah.
Fair enough. And presumably the same from me, Mr. Cortinas. Thank you. Okay, with that now, any further public comment? Going twice? Going three times? I guess sold. Your opportunity to, public comment is now closed unless I miss someone. Okay. I'm perfect. Now we're going to move on to item number seven, which is reports from committees and or officers. And this is where our council members get to speak to their activities. Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have the opportunity of being able to sub for you on Saturday. I appreciate the opportunity. It was great. We did the grand opening of Fire Station Eighty-five. They've already been open for a little bit, but it was a really phenomenal turnout. I was actually quite shocked. I heard there was over three hundred people. And got to tour the station, very great station. And yeah, we had Mr. Crowley there, gave a wonderful speech along with Adam Lincoln and myself. And then we had actually, all the rest of the council was there at one time or another. And so it was good to see everybody and all the families, and I had a good time. So hopefully we'll have more of these events in the future as Pasco continues to grow. So I just want to say thank you to the staff, everybody that put it on, and then also to the council for taking time out of their day to attend as well. I thought it was one of the, just a really good event. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you for subbing for me. And I do apologize again to our fire team for not being present. Somehow I couldn't get from Gig Harbor back down in the same day. Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After our Friday meeting with legislative lobbyists, I met with Public Works Director Maria Sara and Deputy City Manager Sigdell. And actually, Adam Lincoln, our city manager, also popped in about Road Seventy-six. They gave me all of their information they had, and we just began just kind of coordinating our efforts about what is the best way to get that overpass done and using all the tools and people we know to accomplish that. So that was about an hour. And yes, I was the closer on Saturday. I didn't see you guys there, but Chief Crowley vouched for me that I was there after spending all day at the soccer fields in an unofficial capacity. But I also took the time this week and went to the Boys and Girls Club. And I also went to the MLK Open House on Friday afternoon. And Ryan graciously toured me through there. And Jesse and the director of the Boys and Girls Club, Director Rice, took me through the Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, man, I guess I was kind of looking to see if, you know, one was more worthy of the ARPA funds than the other. But boy, they are both really worthy causes, both worthy of our investment of funds. And so, yes, we have some decisions to make in coming weeks. But again, I appreciate staff taking the time to show those facilities to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. And Mr. Lincoln, I know we, I think we have action on that, not tonight, but fairly soon. Or are we still, are you still waiting on requests from city council for further direction on where to allocate those funds? I know it's not tonight.
I think Recha Zirkon, excuse me, Deputy City Manager Sigdell is working on bringing that forward for you.
And she's out, excused absence tonight.
Yeah, she's helping to recruit new businesses.
Yes. Yeah, no big deal, right? Awesome. That tax at base. Mr. Prowess.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, busy week last week. I also did attend the opening, great opening of Station Eighty-five. It was a really good event. There was a lot of people there. Good job, Mayor Protam. Good, good speech. I was just amazed by how just well put together the fire station was. GT Construction did a really good job. I didn't see a bad wrinkle anywhere. It was a really nice facility. So we're very lucky to have those types of facilities. And I also attended the public workshop on revamping our public spaces last week, myself and council member Bazdel. And it was really, really good showing of people who care about the downtown corridor and very good presentation from Frameworks and also commentary from Community and Economic Development Director Jacob Gonzalez provided very good content. So we're looking forward to that and seeing what we're going to be doing in the downtown.
Thank you. I see Mr. Grimm.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. One more thing. If I could just take a moment, recognize a couple of, to embarrass them. Former council member Bob Hoffman's, a couple of his civics students are in the back with us tonight, also trying to get extra credit for their civics class, their high school civics class. And again, I don't know if they need the extra credit or this is just the icing on the cake, but it's great to see them here this evening. Thank you.
Well, I don't know about Mr. Hoffman's rules, but we don't have a no-sleep-in-in-class policy here. So, you know, catch up if you need. I'll just note that I, again, unfortunately was unable to attend the Fire Station Eighty-five, but thank you for covering this, Mr. Milne. Today, I attended a Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Advisory Committee, very lengthy name, for an agency that distributes money from Hanford waste fees to diversified businesses throughout the Tri-Cities. It's always exciting. We are going to be putting out, I don't know if we're calling it an RFP or solicitation, where we will have some grant funds for public agencies that will be led, I think by the end of the year. I can't recall if we chose the fiscal year or end of year. But the point is, for any public agencies, whether it's the city of Pasco or others listening, that money will be available. With that, I see no further lights. We'll move on to item seven B, which is a presentation on the Hanford Advisory Board, on the Hanford Advisory Board from Deputy Ms. Pichon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rob Davis is walking to the podium, but let me do a quick intro. So the Hanford Advisory Board, or the HAB, was established in nineteen ninety-four under the Federal Advisory Committee Act. It is a nonpartisan body with thirty-eight members focused on the cleanup efforts of Hanford Nuclear Reservation. The HAB provides consensus advice to the Department of Ecology, I'm sorry, Department of Energy, Environmental Protection Agency, and the Washington State Department of Ecology. This board is made up of six committees that meets quarterly to address complex cleanup issues and develop consensus advice. Mr. Rob Davis is our mayoral-appointed resident of Pasco. And there's actually no slides for this one. So I'm going to hand it over to Rob and let him provide you a verbal presentation.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Robert Davis. I was appointed in two thousand and four from the city of Pasco and have maintained that for the last twenty years, representing the interests of the city of Pasco. First of all, as you explained, this board was established in order to get public input to some of the decisions made by the Department of Energy at the Hanford site. One thing I need to really clarify is that the members are from local governments, local business interests, Hanford workforce, environmental interests, regional citizen groups, tribal government, State of Oregon, Washington State University, and public at large. The members meet roughly twenty-four times a year. We have two-day meetings at three or four times a year, and then we'll have committees of the whole. Again, we'll have subcommittees. I am the chairman of the Tank Waste Committee. Have been, this is my third term as that. Some of the interesting aspects of the FACA compliant board is that I'm probably going to be running out of my term limits in another year or so. And so they, under the FACA codes, they have general rules of three terms of two years each, and then you'll limit out. And so there's been a lot of effort to convert the Hanford Advisory Board into a FACA compliant board, being that the Hanford Advisory Board was established long before the FACA rules showed up. There's other things I need to, and first of all, I'm a resource to you. And if there's any questions, please feel like, give me a call, whatever. But I do need to tell you some of the things that I feel real important to and have seen a lot of changes over the years. But these are our values. And so you should know that we put our values in front of us when we look at the policy-level decisions that are being made by the United States government, Department of Energy, Department of Ecology, or EPA, and the State of Washington Department of Ecology. Protect the worker health and safety. Protect the Columbia River. Protect and restore the groundwater. Protect the broader environment. Do no harm during cleanup. Involve the public. Secure sufficient funding. Take care of the Hanford waste first. Maintain the integrity of the tri-party agreement. Develop and deploy new technologies without impeding the cleanup. Operate with a bias for remove, treat, and dispose. Incorporate long-term stewardship in the current and future cleanup plans. And finally, remove all the plutonium from the site. And so those general values is what we consider when we start talking about the Hanford site. So what do we do? We have lots of meetings, lots of meetings, and a lot of reading, things of that sort. We receive cleanup status and updates from the government. We are really transitioning between all the departments there. And so we'll get presentations from Ecology, the State of Washington Ecology, the EPA, and from the Department of Energy, as well as some of their contractors will come and inform us. We'll discuss schedules, planning, goals, and priorities. Each year, we generate a list of priorities for the following two years. Discuss environmental challenges, particularly leaking tanks. Comment on decisions that do not align with our values. And consider actionable policy-level advice to all three of the parties. So what's current on the issues? Well, everybody's been, oh, another thing I recently figured out here. So our twenty twenty-four Hanford budget is three-point-oh-five billion dollars. That's up about two hundred million from last year. So we hire, or what's hired out there is about between eleven-five and thirteen thousand employees, for which over four thousand of them come from the city of Pasco. We're very hard workers. The, recently, there's been a discussion of a recent contract for a ten-year period of time for forty-five billion dollars, which will come into effect next year. The Hanford Tank Waste Operations- Uh which will come into effect next year. The Hanford Tank uh Waste Operations Closure um uh group. Is got some uh three different partners in it and it's, of course, it's a limited liability joint effort uh between them all. Basically saying is that the employees are gonna stay the same, the management's gonna shift. Okay, and i- in in some cases, some of the contracting rules have now changed. Um indefinite delivery, um or indefinite budget indefinite delivery is is a term that's going around a lot. Um so um in current issues that we have, um there's a. We 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 came out, um first of all, let me point out that I think through um. Uh through two thousand ten, through now eleven, we really had some problems because of the schedules were slipping. Um every time uh the project turned around, um uh this uh State of Washington was using its consent decree and its ability to sue. And threatening to sue in a lot of cases um uh for speeding up the schedule um and and those activities. Um what what's happened now is that it's a really a hundred and eighty degrees has changed. In that we have now uh worked out very sufficiently ten-year plans. And and have priorities to spend the money and and the contractors. So within that, um there's a lot of decisions that needed to be made towards the end of the night um twenty, you know, by twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um there was one, a set of decisions that involved um some research uh commissioned by the federal government. To um help guide us on some decision-making. We're getting these reports um. And 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 you'll hear that in two thousand nineteen, um some of the schedules got so far out of whack. That uh the um we we they put a pause on it and they went into what they call the holistic negotiations. And now after four years of negotiating and I guess over a hundred meetings. Uh the holistic uh negotiations were announced complete this last month. And so now we're um on a new uh working understanding with the state as far as the timetables and schedules and those activities. Um um other things that are very important, um the vitrification facilities are um progressing quite well. The L A W or the Low Active um Waste um Facility is um on what they call direct feed. So they're taking liquids out of the underground tanks and then um going to send this to this facility and make glass logs out of it. And and essentially immobilize the waste in a glass form. So um so one melter has started up. The second one has been energized and um working. Uh they plan on having their operational readiness reviews uh complete by this December. And um presumably we'll be doing the first uh nuclear waste glass uh vitrification um in beginning of next year. So real happy that's taken a long time. Originally, uh with the original contractors, they were looking at oh seven. For for glass in oh seven, if you remember that mantra. But um but it's taken a while. Um the um the other thing that's coming up right now is the State of Washington Department of Ecology Site-Wide Permit. Uh that's a huge permit, almost seventeen thousand pages long. And um it's been taking years to get and negotiate this permit. Um another thing we have going is the first time that we have been able to um run what they call the test bed initiative. Whereby uh liquid waste from the Hanford site will be uh cleaned up, filtered. Um put in totes and then shipped to a grouting facility to be disposed of at one of two locations. Uh one in Texas or in Utah, Clive, Utah and in Texas at the Waste Control Specialist Facility. Both those facilities are fully licensed to take those. The government does have a number of. I don't know, acres in in these facilities in order to put their waste. Um couple of years ago, um we started working on the last of the three hundred area cleanups. Um and um I ended up uh with a big surprise this year. Uh one of the hot cells that the government had been using in a building had uh over the years developed a leak underneath it. And the um liquids um have assembled into a big ball of. So they don't know what to do with yet. I I mean, the ob- obvious thing is they're gonna dig it out and and dispose of it. But it means a lot more planning and it that schedule is behind a couple more years now. We have a five-year plan now and um. And uh and that's really the status of where we're at on the facility. I I can answer any questions. Um I do know that the um um every year uh they try to uh present us with a new updated version of a five-year plan. Um they tend to be holding to it. They have three general categories in it and one of them, of course, is the risk reduction. The other's the cleanup and the last is gonna be the um the mission infrastructure and keeping it together. Um I do want to point out that we also get some really interesting presentations from different parts of the State of Washington Government. And different parts of the federal government. I'd like to point out that um we had one by Courtney Seal. Uh from the Department Ecology on the HEAL Act recently. And I found that this HEAL Act is quite interesting from the standpoint of uh defining. Um uh the the it's the HEAL Act is Healthy Environment for All Act HEAL passed in two thousand one. Or two thousand uh twenty twenty-one and um the State of Washington is now out there looking for disparities in different communities. And I've seen some of the early maps and they show that uh I guess we're desperate. We have disparities here. So um so I'll pass that on on to you and maybe you can gather some information. But I like, if there's any questions, please um ask them. Uh I'm assuming most of us have some familiarity with the Hanford site and not all this went everybody's head, but um. Questions, Leo? Anything?
Um go ahead and direct them to me and I'll parse them out. Yeah, no, it's all good. It's, you know, gotta stick with the rules, right? Before the attorney jumps over the table and it'll be attorney on attorney fund. Uh Mr. Harbster, you were first.
Thanks. Um Dr. Davis, thanks for your time serving on that board for the last twenty years. Um just really appreciate having folks like yourself representing the city of Pasco and and uh been willing to, you know, invest your time with that. Um can you give us any kind of latest news on what's going on with the civil lawsuit alleging that HMIS workers? Were not performing work they were scheduled and that DOE was billed for that time. Um I serve in the Hanford Communities Board and there's not been really any information from Brian Vance or anybody else lately. Um I can understand why, but just wondering if you kind of knew where that was at or any information you can provide.
Well, I really can't comment on much and it's um I'd like to say no. I I can't comment on that. Thanks. But I I do know that it it came up. A number of uh efforts were initiated to go review. And to make sure everything is consistent with what expectations are. Other than that, um we've had two reports on it and not a whole lot of information shared.
It that's the story I get from everybody. Yeah, alright. Thanks, Mr. Harbster. Mr. Milne.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Now, you'd also mentioned that uh some of the nuclear waste was being transported to, I think you said, was it Utah and uh Texas?
Correct.
Now, I thought there was a thing that talked about like Inslee didn't want, you know, they say they want to clean it up, but he actually didn't want it going to other states. Because the federal dollars that come in to the state of Washington, was that like a miss? Why why did they now are deciding to actually move the waste out?
Well, um it all has to do with um the ability to um process that waste. Originally, when they were just um going through the operations out there, uh recycling the nuclear fuels, putting into waste tanks. They put water in as well as sodium and all all these other stuff. One of the big jobs of the WTP originally was set was to purify that. In other words, to decant the water away and dispose of the water as a L A W or a low-activity uh product. And then and then concentrate the high-level waste and then put it into the high-level waste melter. Um the yes, you're absolutely right. There has been a lot of discussion about um there's two issues within there. One is grouting that waste as opposed to vitrifying it and the second one would be um where to dispose of it. Um and what happened is about uh eleven years ago or so. Uh National Academies came up with a way of redefining some of the waste. So in other words, um the 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 definitions of waste is very tricky. And um if it comes out of the reprocessing facility, they considered all of it. Um first cyclo-raphinate material, that all of it is waste. And because I think in the early days, we just didn't have the evaporator or weather technologies to separate the water from the actual. Good, bad stuff. So um but now what's happened is in the last um six or seven years with some discoveries down Savannah Riverside. They've come up with a new kind of uh dememorizer material called um crystalline. Uh crystalline titanium, I believe it is, uh monotitanate. And that material is a very um very good for extracting um two or three of the worst actors in that waste. Which then allows the government to de- to reclassify that. So as what we call the weir process, the waste incidental to reprocessing. And so if it meets the specifications of a low-level waste, then we can ship it off-site. And and that was the the definition there. The big reason is, is that. There is so much out there that right now, just the high-level loading is we're looking at twenty eighty. A long, long time. And if we had to treat all of the um or if the government was forced to retreat all of the liquid. Um including the water liquid as if it was high-level waste, it would take longer. And so it's a significant shortening of the time um necessary to clean up the site. Um it's real sad for me in that. It won't be cleaned up and I'll be long gone, you know, and and it's it's uh been pretty important. Um I uh spent um most of my career involved in not just Hanford, but Nevada Test Site. And also Idaho Falls and other facilities and and uh, yeah, I care about it.
Okay, well, thank you for the clarification. I do appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, uh Mr. Prowess.
I will make it quick. I was just wondering, it could be a big ask if perhaps we can set up like a tour. Um I don't know if you're still badged to go out at Han- to Hanford Site, um just so that maybe council members can learn a little bit more.
I have some exciting news on that.
Okay.
But um the DOE has um uh ag- again, stepping up all the security and other safety levels. A lot of areas are just not safe for people to go into. And so what they've done is on their website, they have a virtual tour. And so um what I recommend to anybody is uh dial into the website for the Department of Energy. Hanford and take the virtual tour and it'll walk you around and and you can point a pointer at how I want to learn about that. And it'll show you some pictures, what's going on, um and then even some more detail. Um I I like I said, and I will um repeat this, is that it is so much better now. And so much better guided than um I've seen in years. Um it's truly the people working to the same mission. Um they finally have, um in fact, I just got a a a letter today transmitting a report. That they'd finally um uh basically done the groundwork in the study to identify where all the true waste is. So um and and this is, that's an important accomplishment and it became a milestone from the tri-party agreement that was met. Um that was transmitted, being met th- this week, I believe. That we finally have that inventory that we've been missing for years. But like I said, it is a huge site. There are so many different projects going on. Um and 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 then we also have a lot of chances in the future to speed this up. Um people are coming up with new materials, new things all the time. Um we have great partnership down there with um Savannah River and all the national laboratories. So um I think the future is bright. Um I look at um a a ten-billion dollar or no, forty-billion-dollar ten-year contract. Um is gonna be brought to the to this to our area. And so I think that makes it that we're gonna be healthy for a number of years. So. And I'm real positive.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that outlook and I appreciate the long term and short term. I see no further lights, so thank you very much for your time and I'm sure we'll be bugging you some more. Um to your point, those tours are available for council members who haven't been out there, had the pleasure of working on site. Um and you know, maybe HMS's legal counsel will be willing to make a comment to you, Mr. Harbster. Highly doubt it. I wouldn't advise him to, but thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Alright. Our next presentation will be uh item C. That's presentation on Three Rivers Community Foundation. Uh we've got Ms. Pichon, but we also have some other presenters.
Absolutely. Uh good evening, Mayor and Council again. So nonprofit organizations play a crucial role in the success of our community. By addressing needs that might not be otherwise met, fostering a sense of community and driving positive change. Tonight, uh we have the Three Rivers Community Foundation uh here and I am going to pass it over to the CEO, Abby Cameron. Um to provide a presentation to um inform us on all that they do.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela. I couldn't have said it better myself. Um I'm very happy to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity. I wanna um also thank Councilmember Barajas, uh who is a Three RCF Board Member as well as some possibly familiar faces to you. Tara Wiswall and Mike Miller, who are also members of the Three Rivers Community Foundation Board. Um so what I'd like to do when I have this opportunity is just um share a little bit about what a community foundation is. Um uh we've often find that helpful to kind of dial in a little bit on what it is. And then talk a little bit about the impact we've been able to have here on our community. Um so a little bit about the community foundation structure overall. Uh there are seven hundred community foundations across the country, um several dozen here in Washington State. Um and community foundations are structured as five oh one C three organizations, just like any other nonprofit. So essentially, as you'll learn, we are a nonprofit that serves nonprofits. Uh we exist to support their local uh communities that we uh in which we let we reside. Um so Three RCF serves specifically Benton and Franklin Counties. Um and the nonprofit agencies and donors in our area uh and charitable projects. And our goal is to build a permanent community endowment that will support both Benton and Franklin Counties now and far into the future. Our mission as your local community foundation is to create opportunities for perpetual charitable giving in Benton and Franklin Counties. To support nonprofits now and into the future. And our vision is that Three RCF be recognized as a trusted philanthropic leader in the local communities we serve. Through delivering quality donor services, impactful grants and scholarships and with bold initiatives to address community needs. So how do we do that work? How do we um aim to meet our mission? So there's various uh services that we provide. Uh we talked about perpetual giving and a permanent community endowment. We do that through creating endowed funds. So individuals, couples, organizations can come to Three Rivers Community Foundation with a gift that is invested to grow for the future. And it's the proceeds of that gift over time that are used to create grants and funds to fill charitable purposes in our community. So it's um essentially putting a gift to work so that it grows over time and can be there for the long term. We also can use that structure to create scholarship programs. We have about half a dozen scholarships that are funded by individual donors. Couples or in sometimes businesses to uh support the academic academic goals of students um in our community. Who may be um attending school in our community or beyond and the donors get to kind of craft. The um profile of the students that they would like to support through that scholarship program. Another import- important part of what we can do with this invested endowment structure is support our nonprofit organizations. So we currently have thirteen nonprofits in our community who instead of um establishing an invested endowment fund on their own. Do it within it within Three RCF's umbrella. And that uh allows those organizations to focus on their mission and their work. And uh we help them uh grow an endowment, manage it for low fees um and easy service. So that uh nonprofits can grow and thrive and have that long-term support um and entrust us to be their investment partner. and have that long-term support, um, and interest us to be their investment partner. And in the donor services realm of what we provide, that's very varied and custom to the donors that come in our door, but that may be anonymous pass-through giving, it could be special projects that donors want to see supported, uh, it could be oversight of a donation that donors would like our assistance with. Um, and we also help many donors who are receiving required minimum distributions, uh, to, um, get the maximum charitable, uh, results of, of that through their qualified charitable distributions. If you're a CPA or you have a CPA, they know what all those words mean. So I mentioned our nonprofit endowment partners. These are the thirteen organizations that currently, um, three RCF holds their endowment. These are funds that these organizations have raised and turned over to Three Rivers for us to invest and grow on their behalf. And these organizations then have access to the growth of those funds, um, and the proceeds over time. So this is a great way for any size nonprofit to start to build an endowment because the, the, the purpose of an endowment and, and its impact over time can create really strong, uh, 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 strength and growth for those organizations to be very stable and to, to provide their services in our community for the long haul. So I talked a lot about endowment and, uh, investment, um, but of course, what's really important is that those dollars get back out into the community. So all of these funds that we manage, um, spin off, as we say, a, a percentage in grants every year. And we're able to use most of those funds in an annual grant cycle. So we accept applications starting in August, that will start in August of this year. Um, applications can be from any qualified five oh one C three that serves Benton and Franklin County residents. Our avid, average grant awards range between a thousand to, uh, ten thousand dollars. And we recognize all of our grantees with a really wonderful event in early December called the Celebration of Philanthropy. We'll make sure that City Council is aware of that. We would love to have many of you join us. It's a really, it's not a fundraiser event. It's really just a celebration of these grants and the nonprofits who are doing wonderful work. Uh, a great way to keep track of our grant cycle and happenings is to follow us on Facebook. These are some of the organizations that have received grants from Three Rivers. There's also the very middle of our annual report lists the sixty-ish nonprofits who received a grant from us in last year's grant cycle. So you should see many familiar names on that list and maybe some nonprofits that, um, are newer and you're not familiar with. I want to quickly highlight our twenty twenty-three impact. So we gave out about two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in those annual grants. Um, and overall, through the other types of donor services that we provide, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars flowed through Three Rivers Community Foundation and back out to nonprofits in our community that are meeting a wide variety of, uh, community needs. And a wide, if the pie chart recommends the sectors of, uh, different types of nonprofits that we are able to support. So everything from youth to animals to arts to human services, um, uh, mental health, just a really wide variety of nonprofits. Um, I'm moving quickly so my board members can speak. We also want to find ways to support and develop our nonprofits. So just this year, we have partnered with an organization called Board Build. We are now offering online self-paced training in board governance. So how a board works and what the responsibilities of a board member are and how to be a good board member, as well as DEI for nonprofits, a nonprofit working together to think about how DEI might impact their organization and their mission. This summarizes the content of those two modules. Again, they're online through our website. You can access them. We actually have a free webinar on Wednesday this week just to highlight these programs and generate some interest in them. You also have a list of our current board members. We are a two-person staff team delivering these services to the community. So lean and mighty, as we say. And the message I want to leave you with is that there's a lot of different ways that three RCF can be a partner and a support to a, a entity like the city of Pasco. We provide knowledge and connections to the local nonprofit community. We provide grant making services. If you ever want to get dollars to nonprofits, we are a third-party entity that can do that. We have grant making skills, software and experience. We can fiscal sponsor new or young nonprofits and charitable efforts. We can, uh, be a fiscal sponsor for community-funded charitable projects like parks or special initiatives where you're inviting the community to fund a project and just philanthropic everything. Um, I'm going to invite Mike Miller up to make a brief comment.
I think they threw me a curve and put me second instead of last. But, uh, I'm Mike Miller. I'm the president of Moon Security and a current three RCF board member. And one of the things that, uh, you just got presented with from Abby, who's just a great executive director for us, is that, um, facts tell, stories sell. So I want to go back to three years when I first joined three RCF and we were given a specific amount of money of about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and we had about seven hundred and fifty thousand in requests. So we had to go through sixty-five some different, uh, projects and score them, wait them out and all of that kind of thing. And then also hear ten to fifteen, uh, visual presentations on Zoom at that time because we were dealing with the COVID issues. And I want to say that eleven out of the twelve that we really looked at were all about mental health. And so it really brought to our attention the mental health needs that were in our community. We had several of us that got tears in our eyes of the need that's in our community. We have great donors. We have a great community in the Tri-Cities that gives money and it's always fun to spend their money. They give me a bad time about saying that, but that's what we do. We talk to you and they give us money and we figure out how to make it do the biggest impact in our community. So that's my short version.
All of charity's under.
There.
Nick, don't give me too many, uh, twenty seconds. Um, I just wanted to emphasize the fiscal sponsor part is that we help nurture new nonprofits in our community. Um, and we provide them a very prudent, um, structured, fiscally responsible fiduciary standard that their money is managed. And I think that's super important for a lot of nonprofits who do a lot of wonderful things, but maybe that financial responsibility and fiduciary standard isn't what they're best at. It lets us do that for them so that they can be successful in what they're doing and serving community needs that we desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do we have any questions or comments from council?
If I can just add a comment.
Yeah, Barajas.
And I'll just add a comment. As a board member, um, it's, it was very, very hard to read this past, uh, um, session, some of those requests. As one of the newer board members, I've only been there, I'm going to say maybe a year, under a year. Um, it's very difficult to read the stories, to read about the need and the why, uh, they're coming to, uh, three RCF for funding. But, um, you know, there's a lot of people out there in the community that want to do good. There's a lot of organizations that are trying to make a difference for a small group of people. And how do you fund everyone? It's very hard to decide.
Find more donors.
And so that's why you're here. Thank you for being here. Um, so I would invite the community, um, if you are, um, anyone who's watching and everyone here in the room, if you have any extra funds that you want to designate to a better good, please reach out to three RCF, not because I'm a board member, but because of the great work that they're doing in the community, the difference that, that the group is doing. So thank you for presenting.
Thank you, Blanche. That, yeah, that is the profile of what we do. It's individuals and couples and organizations that have spent a good deal of their life in this community and want to leave something when they're not here anymore, when they graduate, when they don't need those funds anymore. Everyone has a different way to say it, but, um, it's legacy planning, it's estate and will planning, and, um, we're there to be that charitable portion of it because yes, you could leave money directly to an organization and you should, if that's your, your, your wish. But we can provide oversight, we can provide flexibility over time if the needs change, just a lot of different options when you get to talk to us about how your legacy could, uh, could last here through three RCF.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation and it's a great plug, both from you, the board members and, and, and our council member, board member.
Yay.
Councilwoman Barajas.
Just want to say any nonprofits that you know that maybe aren't familiar with us, we try really hard to get to everybody, but if you feel like they don't send them our way, we love get to know yous and then to see how we can make connections and help. So you're all ambassadors now to help us do that.
Thank you. Greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, with that, we're going to move on to the next item, which is item D, twenty twenty-three Fire Department Annual Report from Chief Crowley. And with all the moon, just making sure it's you. All right. Chief Crowley, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Serrano, and good evening, council. Uh, before I start, just thank you for the kind words on our open house. Much appreciated. Thank you very much. All right. Tonight, uh, I'm going to be reviewing the twenty twenty-three Fire Department Annual Report. Uh, each of you has a hard copy that we delivered. This presentation will just kind of be a, a, um, high-level, um, overview of that document. So again, some of these numbers are going to be a little bit off because this is twenty twenty-three, things have changed, we have grown. But in twenty twenty-three, we had a staff of ninety-one, uh, working out of four stations. Um, during that year, we had a total of, uh, eighty-three hundred, um, total incidents. And of those, two hundred and fifty-six of those were our mutual aid and automatic aid calls. So we do have these agreements in place with both Richland and Kennewick and also with our districts. So we do help out with them as well. Uh, through those incidents, we had a little under, or little under seventeen thousand, uh, total unit responses. So the difference there is, um, a call, uh, sometimes requires one and one unit. So we might have two or three, depending on the nature of the call. And then again, we maintained our, uh, protection class three rating through the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau. So the services we provide to our community, uh, fire protection, we provide structure protection, wildland protection, and we also hold the contract with the Port of Pasco to provide the aircraft rescue firefighting services. So we do all the, um, ARF, um, services for them. Uh, emergency medical services, we provide both basic and advanced life care support. Uh, we also provide all the transports to the hospitals. Uh, we do have our special team responses. So with that, we have a technical rescue team. That's our rope rescue, confined space and trench rescue. We also have a water rescue team, a vehicle machinery and rescue team, and hazardous materials, uh, group that also assists with the regional hazardous materials team. And then finally, we provide community risk reduction. And what that looks like is, uh, we talked before about our community, uh, I'm sorry, resource navigators that go out and help the community that may not need, uh, transport to a hospital. And then we also provide home safety visits. And what that does is the community can reach out to us. They can ask if we can check their home for smoke detectors, making sure they're working properly, uh, slips, trips and falls, making sure, um, rugs are in place, elderly that are having trouble walking around. We just kind of give them a heads up on how they can make their home a bit safer. This next slide shows an overview of our structure and how we're organized. So, um, I do have two deputy chiefs. We are going through a little bit of a restructure right now. So this will look a little bit different in twenty twenty-four. Uh, but we have a deputy chief of operations and then a deputy chief of administration. Um, how that's broken out is, um, the operations deputy is in charge of the logistics and then all of our operations in the field. And then our administrative deputy chief, uh, covers our planning and then the community risk reduction services. This next slide, uh, gives an overview of our station response zones. So just to give you an idea of, um, when we plan our stations, what it covers. So looking to the far right, that more pinkish color, that's the station eighty-one. And you can see it's right next to the highway. Um, and that's the area that it covers. Moving to the left is station eighty-two, which is in the blue, and that's mostly the airport and a little bit south of the airport. And then you drop down into the yellow area, that's station eighty-four off Court. Um, the white areas are county pockets. And then, uh, moving over more to, um, the west in that more salmon color, that's station eighty-three, which is off of, uh, road sixty-eight in Sandifer. And as you just know, um, again, next one will be station eighty-five, that's going to help out with some of those responses. So when we look at our, um, incident report, we break down a lot of our calls, uh, mainly into several different groups, uh, EMS, fire, rescue, um, aircraft rescue and hazards. So that breaks it down, um, in a nutshell, um, a little bit over seventy percent of our calls are EMS related. Um, so that does take the bulk of what we do. Um, but again, you can see how that's broken down, um, uh, for fires, we had three hundred and five fire-related calls. So that's anything from trash can fires to, uh, a home fire to a business fire. This next slide is, um, covering our call volume trends. So it kind of gives you an idea of, of how our calls, uh, trended out over the last couple of years, starting from, we went back to two thousand nineteen, and you can kind of see the growth. And so you kind of see from nineteen over into twenty twenty-two, some of the darker years of COVID, we saw a lot of our, um, calls kind of, um, jump up, almost about a thousand calls a year. And then we saw from the last year over, not too much of a, a major growth, um, but about fifty calls. But the big thing here was telling is we skyrocketed quite a bit, but then we maintained that level. And so we saw unprecedented growth, but now we're maintaining that. We're not dropping back down. And then the, um, the chart to the right is call volumes per day. That's kind of shows you, um, the calls that we get per day, per the month. And so you can kind of see, uh, July, we normally get about twenty-six calls per day that we average. Again, that's kind of our busy time through wildland season. And then it kind of peters off, uh, usually well in February, March is our slower times of year. Our call volume concentration, this is what we call is a heat map. So as it gets a little bit brighter, those are more concentrated calls. So you can see in that area, it's right south of the airport, uh, mostly, um, will be station eighty-two's response and the station eighty-one. Those are some of our busier, uh, stations. But you can kind of see, um, we, we use these maps to help determine our staffing models, our deployment models and where we, uh, project growth's going to be and then put new stations. So you can kind of see, uh, where that, um, our call volumes kind of end up or go in So as far as we look at our performance measures, uh, some of it through our resolution, uh, twenty-nine thirty-eight, um, reporting out to council, this gives an idea of what we're doing and how we're, um, hitting our target goals. So we break it down into, um, for fire, so the first engine arrival and then a full complement. So the first engine arrival, arrival is self-explanatory. Uh, what we look at there is how long does it take to get our first engine on scene to a fire? Um, and then the full complement, that determines, um, that, that's based off of the type of call. So on a smaller fire, we might just have one or two engine companies. Larger, uh, apartment fire, we, we'd need five or six engine companies and a louder company. So we start looking at our goals. Um, we expect for our, um, response times, for the first engine to arrive is, is at six minutes and then for the full complement is twelve minutes. Uh, this also shows, um, some of the numbers here, um, some of our mutual aid having to come in because a lot of times when you have multiple calls going, we can't sustain and, and hit all those numbers on target. So we do rely on those mutual aid like we talked about before and automatic aid. So when we're looking at our, uh, goals met, uh, you start seeing some of our numbers, especially for the first engine arrival, um, a little bit lower than what we want to be hitting at. And we fully expect this to get better and get a, a better number with station eighty-five being open. So one of the things we look at is as we're staffed is concurrent calls. So we get a call going out, that unit responds to it, and then the second call in that same area. So another unit has to respond from a little bit further out. So that's the, um, essence of building other stations and strategically placing them, that they can cover each other in reducing that response time. So we noticed that, as you can see, between eighty-three and eighty-four, there's a big gap there. And so that's why eighty-five was placed where it was. So we see, and that's one of our goals is to improve those numbers. And then when we drop down to the EMS side, we look at that. So the BLS, the basic life support versus the advanced life support. Again, uh, the number of calls we had is majority of them are basic life support calls. And so the difference there, basic life support call might be someone that's, uh, fell, hurt their knee, you know, um, is injured. Advanced life support would be more of, um, a heart attack, a stroke, something more serious in nature. Again, our response time are six minutes to get, get on scene. And you can kind of see where our actuals are ninety percent of the time. So we are hitting that, um, better with those calls. But again, with station eighty-five, we are looking at increasing those numbers, um, getting that up to ninety percent. Then the other, um, areas that we look at as far as before, performance measures is what's called turnout times. And so that is something we look at as far as once we get the call coming from dispatch, getting the crews, um, in their correct gear and out the door. So we break that down into fire and EMS and you can see the, the unit responses with that. And then our goal of two minutes, ninety percent of the time, and you see our actuals there. So, uh, again, um, the two minutes for the fire, um, is, is a little bit low that we want. But again, two minutes is pretty aggressive, um, goal, but it's something we definitely want to be attaining because it's very important to get on the scene as quick as possible. But then you can, can see the average numbers as well there, the average number of times or average time we respond. And then the last, uh, response times that we try to capture are for our special teams. And that is, uh, again, for technical rescue or hazardous materials in wildland. Um, and then you kind of see from there, our goal is Or hazardous materials in wildland, um, and then you kind of see from there, our goal is getting out the door um, in six minutes. Except for the ARF is three minutes, and that's uh, dictated by the FAA. So one of the things um, you might see as far as technical rescue, that number is pretty high as far as the uh, the response time. Reason being is we, we do have a team, but it's also um, in conjunction with the other cities. And actually assembling the crews to get going on that, it takes a little more time to get their equipment, a lot of their equipment's on a different apparatus. And um, so you see that number a little bit higher as you get, getting all the, the crews together. One of the things with that is we do still get one of our first engines on scene to help mitigate the call, and then getting the rest of the team on, onboard, takes a little bit more time. But uh, the big thing is getting that first response and getting that first engine on scene. So as we look at um, two zero twenty three, we look at some of the accomplishments. And one, some of the biggest things we looked at is we host a regional fire academy. So we, we're doing that in conjunction with the city of Richland, with the Richland Fire Department, and we graduated eighteen Pasco recruits. So that was in anticipation of um, Station eighty five opening up, making sure our, our crews are ready to go when the station opened, and we got that accomplished. We also uh, through our growth, uh, we uh, needed um, logistics coordinators, so we got that person in play helping with our logistical needs. And then also hired uh, some more administrative staff with a department aide, or department assistant, excuse me. We also had several promotions, uh, we had a battalion chief, captain and a lieutenant promotion. And then one of the, the council goals was to um, make sure that we maintain our WSRB rating of a, a protection class three, which we did. We also entered into a standard cover assessment, so an SOC is what we call it, with our um, partnering cities. So with both Kennewick and Richland, and what that is, is, is looking at globally, how do we operate? And how can we be most efficient working together and collaborating our resources? So we went through that process and we're actually getting the, the results right now and, and putting that together that we'll uh, talk about, I'm trying to another meeting, going over that. And then um, keeping up all of our equipment, uh, we rechassied and purchased a new medic unit. So we have four uh, new units coming to us, we have um, two of them in our possession and two will be coming in the next couple uh, months. And then also, we ordered three new Type one structure engines, those are our structures that we have, uh, those big engines that you see. We'll be getting those towards the end of the year, again, to replace our outdated equipment. And then during that two zero twenty three, again, we began the construction of eighty five. So our goals for uh, two zero twenty four that we put forth is one we already completed was a um, opening of Station eighty five. Again, that opened February fourteenth of this year, uh, it's been very successful and hitting, hitting the uh, the marks that we've been looking for. As far as um, kind of balancing out where the calls need to lie with between eighty three and eighty four. So this is definitely picking up those calls that are taking a little bit longer to get to. Um, we're also gonna be uh, starting to project out and looking for land for uh, eighty six with the um, anticipation of purchasing land. Uh, in two zero twenty five. So again, what we're looking at for eighty six is east Pasco going up north, more towards Dairy Gold, we anticipate a lot of growth there, a lot of industrial growth. Um, and then also we're watching um, how the Broadmore area is growing and developing and what comes in. And so those are our two target areas, um, that I'll be working with the city manager Lincoln on, and as far as looking at um, where the most strategic place to put uh, stations at. And then again, as we noticed, um, some of our response times, we definitely want to keep um, aggressively tackling those and giving the best response and service to our community. So we're putting goals on that as far as reducing some of our times. I definitely see and I'm very confident that we'll see a decrease in those with Station eighty five open. So hopefully next year when we report out, we'll see some of those uh, numbers improve. And then one of the biggest things with uh, the new officers and the growth of our department is training. And so one of the big ones is uh, creating a very comprehensive officer development program. So we'll be hopefully having that in place by the end of the year. And that um, is a high level overview of what we've been doing in um, with the fi- in the Fire Department in two zero twenty three. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Um, do we have any council member, Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your presentation and all your team does, Chief Crowley. Thank you for taking me out to Hammer this year too, and giving me the taste of the experience and just um, everything that even went on this weekend at Station eighty five. But just one, one question, just um, maybe it's the uh, amateur accountant in me that, you know, sees other in it, you know? Not necessarily red flags, but it just makes me curious, what is the other? I mean, I'm old, I used to watch firefighter shows where they were rescuing cats out of trees. I doubt that's what's included in there, but can you give just maybe a couple of examples of? Cause that's like a quarter of your calls is others, so.
So we capture those um, in the actual annual report, it drills down a little bit deeper on what those calls entail. But believe it or not, we still do get calls for, for cats in trees. But those others are gonna be more of like um, odor investigations, smoke investigations, stuff like that. Where just, nobody know, really knows what exactly it is, so we get dispatched out for more of an investigation to take a look. So kind of some minor calls of, of that nature. You know, we saw some, some kids, they look like they had some fireworks in a, in a grassy field, so we'll go out there and take a look. So we kind of, it's, it is a big number, but as in the packet, you see it, it drills it down a little bit more um, precise, some of those calls.
Okay, and just one more thing, just um, want to compliment, you know, we often think of with the police back there, officer safety. But we forget, there's also, you know, firefighter, you know, officer safety, and I really appreciate the protocol. Whether airlocks or just, you know, your attention to, you know, those details of, you know, keeping our firefighters safe. Whether it be eliminating carpet on floors or some of those current protocols that are just more mindful of um, just protecting our firefighters. So thank you for all you do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim and Mr. Chief, or Mr. Chief. That'd be great if you were Chief, Chief. I see no further lights, so I'll ping you with a couple of questions, if they light up, I'll circle back. Um, you know, the second goal of equip new vehicles in place and service. I know um, Chief Gear said that there were a lot of long lead times on engines, chassis, those sorts of things. Are, are we coming out of that or are we still hammered on that?
It, it's actually getting a little bit worse, and so we just actually had a meeting, um, we're looking at um, the replacement of our new ladder truck. And so we just met with our rep today, and they're about three to four years out. So we're really projecting that and then costs, so we're looking at what it looks like buying something now and then increase with steel and everything else is, is skyrocketing. So um, yeah, we, we're um, looking a couple of years ahead of time, and that's also gonna play impacted when we look at future stations. Of making sure that when we build it, we have it in um, in alignment with buying our apparatus, but yeah, they're about three to four years out.
Um, so I guess with that, obviously, we're looking towards growth and new stations, uh, what are we looking at? Are, are we okay with our current apparat? Yeah, our vehicles, are, are we okay there, are we, are we hurting? Uh, what's the need from council?
We're doing pretty, pretty good right now, like I said, council um, was very supportive, and like I said, we were getting, we have four new medic units. Well, we, and one of the things we look at is we uh, can do a rechassis on our medic unit. So we keep what's called the box, that's where we uh, the crews work, and then the chassis, and we, we save some money doing it that way. So we try to be very um, aware and um, um, very cost conscious. Uh, and getting the best product by still being very frugal with what we have, but getting the best product. So we have those, we can rechassis um, our appra- our medic units three times before the box is out of date. So we'll be looking at that coming up, that we're getting close to that, that timeline. But having those, I feel our fleet's looking really good. The one that we're looking at is um, a ladder truck, ours is getting a little bit old right now, but that's something I'm still working with the city manager Lincoln on. And uh, we're just doing some very preliminary um, look, looks at what we're looking at and, and moving forward with the development of that. So right now, to answer your question, we're looking pretty good.
Okay, well, that's, that's always good to hear, especially when we're spending money, getting new buildings, getting new bodies, making sure our equipment's good, you know? Uh, to a degree, you're only as good as your equipment, right? Um, I, and that's not entirely true, obviously. But uh, we got the bodies and we got the, the beds and the space, but no equipment, that's not super helpful. Well, I, I really appreciate uh, your team, their work, really proud of the promotions we've seen over uh, recent times. Um, it's great to see our, our folks internally rise up, you know, more than all those guys a- and gals. Um, you know, and it's awesome to present to uh, the firefighter of the year earlier this year, so, you know, kudos to you all, I see no further lights. So with that, we will move on to item number eight, which is hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there to, there is none listed. Um, item number nine, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings, we have two items, A and B. First one, item A, ordinance number four one, four seven one four, to amend PMC or Pasco Municipal Code Section. Three point three five point zero six zero for cemeteries fees and charges, this is coming from Director Rice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, last week I brought to you a uh, draft ordinance and presentation about updating the current cemetery fee structure. Due to uh, increased market supply rates, staffing costs and things like that. So this week I returned to you with the same presentation to assist with any questions you may have or get direction on policy that council like us to take. Um, through the week, I did provide some information on the current uh, cemetery um, earnings and revenue, or revenues and. Expenses each year for the last five years, um, so in addition to that information or the presentation I returned with, is there anything else I can provide to you this evening?
Okay, with that, I see Mr. Harpser light up.
Yeah, thanks Director Rice for that uh, additional information. For those five years, there was, you know, it's pretty big hills and valleys with those numbers, just wondering if you could explain that? And then that five year period, and I, I guess five years, but that five years then puts the cemetery on the plus side by almost two hundred thousand. Um, but was curious why the pretty significant ups and downs, it wasn't relatively even.
I'd wanna say discussions of staff involved um, around the, around COVID nineteen and some additional deaths that occurred during that time. But it does vary year by year and it goes up and down. Um, just recently before the meeting, I did talk to Director Buckley about financial projections, cause um, I'm good at spending, not good at the rest of it, as you know, so. Um, but, but essentially based on um, looking at that, it looks like expenses have increased an average six percent uh, per year since two nine, or excuse me. Uh, revenues have increased an average six percent since two thousand nineteen, and expenses have increased an average of thirteen percent. And that, based on her trending, uh, the fund would reflect a negative balance sometime in two zero twenty six unless we see an increase.
Okay, that's very helpful, thanks.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, I see Mr. Peralas your light.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I appreciate the extra information and uh, um, indicated it's time that we increase this. Um, I, I, the only thing I was thinking was perhaps we revisit this, you know, in shorter periods as opposed to twenty years or wherever it was. You know, two thousand nine.
Yeah, that was also my intent of bringing it forward, it had been a while, so we can bring it back a little more often.
Okay, um, what timeframe are you thinking, cover a couple of years, five years?
Um, I think I'm open to policy direction by council, there, this really isn't set like some of our other requirements. So I think it's kind of how often you'd like to see it, we're happy to do a market analysis and bring it back.
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd be in favor of some type of market analysis and then figure out every, you know, um, kind of when, when, when we should revisit this. And increase costs as need be, thank you.
Thank you. With that, are you needing direction on that policy element or can we hold on that?
Yeah, we can hold on that, I mean, with the increase, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll revisit with you.
Sound good, uh, do we have any public comment here? Going once, going twice, uh, seeing none, seeing no lights from council, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four seven one four, amending the Pasco Municipal Code Section. Three point three five point zero six zero cemetery fees and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Mr. Peralas, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay, we got one nay, Mr. Harpser, and six ayes, the ayes have it. Moving along, item B, resolution number four four five zero, bid, bid award for Broadmore area tax increment financing improvements. For the Broadmore Burns Intersection Improvement, and it looks like it's Director Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, this is an item we discussed last week. We um, presented to you a bid award recommending award to Apollo Inc. For the construction of intersection improvements at Broadmore and Burns Intersection. I do not intend to do the presentation again, but if you want me to go to a specific slide, I'm happy to do so and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah, do we have any questions or comments from council? Uh, Mr. Grim?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you, just looking forward to get this done, it's one of the most, you know, often brought up issues we've heard from the public. Or at least I have, a necessary it, um, intersection improvement, I just appreciate going forward with this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Harpser.
Only comments, just uh, thanks staff for following up on my questions this week, appreciate it.
Thank you, do we have any other questions or council comments? Seeing none, do we have any public comment? Going once, going twice, third time's a charm, with that, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor, move to approve resolution number four four five zero, awarding bid number two four five nine five. For the Broadmore area tax increment financing improvements, Broadmore Burns Intersection Improvements Project to Apollo Inc. of Kennewick, Washington. And further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Got a uh, motion by Mr. Milne and a second by Ms. Blaisdell, uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes unanimously, pushing to number ten, unfinished business, uh, Mr. City Manager, you got anything? Seeing a head shake, uh, for those who are watching, can't see him, moving on to item number eleven, new business. None, okay, as, number twelve, miscellaneous discussion, Mr. Lincoln.
A couple of updates from uh, Director Rice.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, just wanted to note two events that we have upcoming this next week. First one we have is our Memorial uh, Weekend Swim, which is the opening of our pool for the season. Um, it's going to take place uh, Saturday, Sunday and Monday, uh, one to five forty five PM with an admission fee of four dollars. I checked the weather, it's gonna be cold, but we're gonna try to hold the temperature at eighty degrees, so come on out for that. Uh, and then of course, on Monday, we have our Memorial Day event out at City View Cemetery, um, so that's Monday, May twenty seventh, starting at eleven AM. Uh, we'll have you, Mayor, of course, presenting speech as well as other performances and uh, remembrance of those that gave all. And are currently buried in our cemetery or local to the area, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you to you and your staff, uh, it's always a wonderful event, even whether, whether it's not the best. Uh, anything else from staff before we move to Mr. Peralas, okay, Mr. Peralas?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief, since we're getting kind of late into the night. Um, I just wanted to present something to the council, um, I mean, attending a lot of the downtown workshops and, and talking a lot of downtown businesses. And I think it's time we probably explore a parking program. Um, there's a lot of municipalities have, who have done the city act, and just revamped theirs. So I think we could lean on, on other municipalities for some type of guidance. I, I talked to a lot of business owners and they're getting tired of employees of other businesses parking in front of their business for hours on, on end. I mean, this is nothing new, so I, I, I think it's something we need to probably start thinking about, exploring it. Especially given the fact that we're looking into these parklet programs and stuff like that. And so I just wanted to present that as the council as something, um, I mean, we could do that right now in conjunction with the parklet program and also revamping the uh, mobile food vendors. Cause they're gonna be taking up spaces, and so I think we need to address this before we get business owners in city hall. That says, hey man, we have no parking, so um, I have a couple of other things, but I just wanted to uh, let you guys know. And then maybe gauge some interest to start exploring that and putting that on uh, Mr. Gonzalez's plate, is something we can start doing right now. Um, another thing that ca- that's been brought to myself and Councilmember Blaisdell's attention is the Peanut, Peanuts Park bathrooms are closed all the time. Um, not all the time, but they are closed and um, we have individual unhoused down there in downtown using storefronts as bathrooms. And so we, we were kind of talking about it at the public workshop um, last week about, I don't know if we can look into getting some porta potties for the downtown area for these individuals to use. Um, if we're not gonna have the Peanuts Park bathrooms open, um, it's just, just something food for thought. Um, I think we need to help out the business owners, cause they're the ones who clean up some stuff that's left over. Um, we do have individuals who clean up in downtown, but you know, you know, when business owner, when that individual doesn't get there. I've been down there, we, we hired someone, right Adam, to clean up the downtown, we have like a.
Sorry, I guess we do through the, the code enforcement abatement program.
Right, yeah, cause I've been down there and I've seen him clean up, so, but he doesn't get there in time, um, you know, in some of these instances, and the business owners have to clean up. Cause people have to walk past that type of stuff to get to their, you know, appointments and stuff. So just something, it's probably gonna be something we have to do a budget adjustment or something, uh, you know, to get porta potties, but it's just something. We, that got brought up at the public workshop and maybe we can look into sponsorships um, from other pe- from other businesses. Um, and lastly, I had a resident reach out to me in regards to recycling and how there's really no recycling canister kind of in the West Pasco area. The last one was located at Maya Angelou, and that one's gotten moved. So I guess that one was put there by a Department of Ecology grant, that one ran out. And so I talked with um, former council member Rebecca Francic, and she said that if we want to put one in that location over there, it'd be about four hundred dollars a month. And so I talked with, um, former council member Rebecca Francic, and she said that if we want to put one in that location over there, it'd be about four hundred dollars a month. So I just want to present to the council, that's something we want to look into providing more access to recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would say, I think certainly to your first point, the if we're looking at some sort of revamping on parking, presumably what you're talking about is enforcement program. Is that correct?
Correct. It'd be an enforcement program and also just a, uh, kind of like a badging program for the downtown business owners. You know, their employees would come in, they'd get badge, and you know, they'd have places to park and, and you know, and I think one thing we need to enforce a two-hour parking, you know, down there, uh, which is not happening. And so obviously, if there's ways to gather those fees and pay for someone who's dedicated to doing some of that enforcement, but also doing other stuff in code enforcement, you know, that would be good, pay for itself. But it as we're growing and we want people to be going to downtown and we want to do, have these different activities, we kind of have to start thinking about these issues going forward. Uh, because like I said, I mean, if we're going to start doing these parklet programs, I can see business owners coming in here, me and Matt, because they have, you know, their, uh, people who come in for their businesses, uh, their their services have no place to park. So.
Sure. I I think my point or my question there, uh, then dovetails into whether or not it'd be timely to add into the downtown master plan. Uh, if we're too far along or not far along enough that we need a quicker response. Um, I do think, you know, to the extent that we're making these improvements in the area, we may want to look at something like that. Quite frankly, I'm not happy to regulate, you know, private businesses and street fronts as much, but, uh, I think, you know, I guess maybe council, do we have any general thoughts on that issue?
It's in the master plan. I mean, uh, they talks about the in the master plan. It's just a matter of when we get to it. Um, but I think given the fact that we're working on, you know, parklets and stuff and cafes, you know, street cafes, I think we kind of, we could start kind of putting in there. Obviously, it'd be a last ditch effort right now. I think, um, Mr. Gonzalez and his team are rounding third base with the mobile food vendor and also the parklet program. So, but it'd be something probably we need to address right now.
Okay, so I guess with that, uh, I I see a lot of lights. Let's stick on the parking, um, in downtown. Uh, we'll start with Ms. Blaisdell.
Uh, to make a comment, I guess, about the porta potties downtown, I'm not a fan of that. I don't like the way they look. However, the concerns that were brought to our attention were they were going to the bathroom in the alleys and storefronts, and that's an issue. But at the same time, my personal, um, I guess, experience is the drugs and the drug use inside the bathroom if we were to open up the bathroom. And I'm sure it's an ongoing issue in downtown. Um, I'm just assuming, but, um, I'm assuming that's why they're locked. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The drug use inside the bathroom, is that why they're locked?
Um, or damage. And again, it's not all all people damage or use drugs in those. We want to be clear, they're on on unhoused that do need services. But unfortunately, those very few do create issues. So, yeah, generally, we do keep the bathrooms locked. Uh, we also experienced that in some of the other parks as well. So, um, and then even at Farmer's Market, I tend to find myself have to monitor the bathrooms quite regularly and ensure that they're not occupied for long lengths of time, or sometimes we have to close them due to drug use. So. Um, with porta potties, we run into a similar issue. The other thing we run into is just outright damage. We've had several porta potties burnt to the level ground last year in different parks. Um, I can't speak for how willing B D I is to continue that, but they have told us that it's about thirteen hundred dollars to replace those porta potties when they're damaged. They haven't charged us yet. So, but that is the next quickest option. Um, we did last year look at another long-term option, which I think is more costly, but maybe more effective called a Portland Lou, or basically it's an op- it's kind of an open air area restroom, a public restroom, uh, open at the top, open at the bottom with 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 grading and and or or louver type system, I guess I'll say. Uh, they are meant for areas like this. They're called a Portland Lou because they were designed and patented by the city of Portland, and everyone they sell, they get a percent of money that goes to their recreation department, which is kind of cool, but it's not my recreation department. But, um, they are a little bit more costly. They're about a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars plus the install, but, uh, we we do have some information. But I think in the downtown area and some of our more used parks where we can't monitor those internal structures or porta potties aren't withstanding the abuse that they're taking, these are designed to be readily cleaned with a pressure washer, sanitized, and ready to go. Uh, staff don't even necessarily need to use them. Since they're open area, you see if they're occupied by more than one person or how long they've been occupied by. And if they do happen to use drugs in them, they tend to ventilate pretty quick versus the enclosed model. So happy to examine, looking at adding porta potties as an immediate fix, um, because again, we do need something. But I think long term, we're probably going to look for some policy or direction by council to try to resolve that issue or at least make an attempt with one of those. So.
I'm not a fan of the porta potties. That's just my opinion, though. Um, the second thing is on Route sixty-four in court, there's, um, recycling options there.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ross, uh, do you have a comment on the parking issue or something separate?
It was it was on a little bit on everything, but I think, uh, Director Rice touched on everything in regards to the parking enforcement. I know this has been a conversation with council for the past couple of years. Um, the police department, um, correct me if I'm wrong here. Uh, the police department did implement some changes to where there was more monitoring. Um, however, they're still short-staffed and, um, and it it really is up to the business owners to monitor and and make sure there's flow of traffic. Um, City of Pasco has made sure to look into options for parking, um, places. Um, and there has been other places designated for parking. But still, uh, people want to park right in front of the business rather than walk, you know, across the street, go into a place. But I know the police department has made a huge effort, uh, into implementing a way to monitor and cite and educate those that are in violation. Um, I'm not sure here, but I don't know that there's been a lot of tickets issued out there. I'm sure there was tickets issued. Um, people would then start using those designated park areas. In regards to the, uh, porta potties, you're correct. Um, thank you again for giving that full report. Again, it was brought to, um, there was even images included in some emails in the past year where porta potties have been damaged. Um, they've been replaced and again, damaged when the bathrooms are open. The structural bathrooms are left open. They've been vandalized, broken, um, graffitied. And and again, it takes for the city, uh, staff to go back and clean it and make sure it's usable for the next person, but it continues to be um, damaged. And so how do we, how do we do this? Yes, I understand that we need to provide services, basic services for the community. Um, and so I'm sure staff is still looking into how to do that, what to do. Here's an option. Um, but you know, it's it's an ongoing battle on on providing services and ongoing battle of people damaging that. Um, you know, just just like two cents on what's going on. But, uh, I do want to say that the staff has been actively looking into how to mitigate these situations across the city.
Thank you, Ms. Barahos. Maybe we should take it parking in the potties. Um, but with that, Mr. Harpser, go ahead.
I'll just add to that, two business owners experiencing issues could use the Ask Pasco app, uh, for help on that. Um, as a council, do we want to bring forward voting on reallocating ARPA funds from MLK Boys and Girls Club, or are we good with where we're at?
I was going to get there. Let's, let's, uh, well, that's good. Let's, let's just touch on the parking, uh, issue because of where we are in the status of what's being done with the C E D department. I guess the question that I have is, do we have, uh, the support to provide staff direction to roll this into? Are you asking to roll it into the analysis related to food trucks, vendors, and parklets? What is your request?
I said I wouldn't do that this time, but I think it's something we need to address. I mean, City Yakima is ninety thousand plus people, we're eighty. And they have a parking program and we're trying to expand our downtown. So I wouldn't say lock it into what they're doing right now. But I think it's something we need to address.
So I I think, does anyone oppose directing staff to check that program out and then provide us, let's start with written analysis, you know, just an email to council, um, and then see where it goes from there. And and certainly links to whatever their enforcement mechanisms, et cetera, program are. If you can, any opposition to that move first? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Lincoln, I see a head nod and writing. I think we're golden there. So back to Mr. Harpser, the question of reallocating funds, um, from MLK. I will tell you this, I have talked with Senator Torres. The state did allocate funds that they anticipated we would anticipate, we would spend the one point two six, I think, million for Boys and Girls Club. Um, and the anticipation was that that eight hundred plus K that the state legislature, uh, funded for the Boys and Girls Club was because it was a shovel-ready project. Now, I understand we've had presentations that, um, MLK is design-ready, like design shovel-ish ready, um, very, you know, similar but different. Uh, I will tell you, my position is if we real- reallocate that to capture the funding and say thank you to the legislature, I think it's a minimum and positive move, uh, from the city's perspective. I know we've lobbied for MLK as well. So I am in support of, uh, pushing that, uh, money back to the Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, I think to your point, where do you stand on it?
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of that as well. And so I think, uh, other council members had mentioned they're not in favor, so I would think that'd be enough to bring it forward for a a vote, um, in further discussion if need be.
Sounds good, Mr. Grim.
Just real briefly, just would it be injurious, though, from the state if they earmark the funds for MLK for us to move it away from there? Would they be offended by that or?
So the the statement from Torres, Senator Torres, I should call her, uh, was that they granted eight hundred K for the Boys and Girls Club. There was also some allocation, as I recall, for MLK. Was that state or federal funding or both? Both. Both. Both for MLK. And it it does remain, there there would remain some dollars from ARPA in there also. So it's it's not, wouldn't be a full sweep of the ARPA dollars, just to be clear. Mr. Grim, do you have more? Do you have a position? I'm going to put you all on the spot. We're going to determine whether or not we're moving this forward.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, both just very worthy causes. I, um.
That's okay.
Um, either or. I I I'd probably lean a little bit more towards Boys and Girls, but I think they're both very, very worthy causes to support, and I'd like to see us ultimately get them both done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peralos, I know both you and Ms. Barahos had a a position of MLK, is that correct? Certainly, um, feel free to speak your mind.
I'll be in favor of reallocating, um, the ARPA funds to Boys and Girls Club at this time.
Okay. Mr. Milne.
I thought it was Boys and Girls Club as well. Was the the amount that we were allocating, was it the eight hundred thousand or was there?
No, that's that's the state's. It was the one two six, I believe, was the number.
Just want to clarify that. So, um, like it's a good Boys and Girls Club. I I do believe the MLK Center is a worthy cause. Again, I have the same position that Councilman Grim has, that like to see both of them done. Um, but at this moment, I guess I'm for the Boys and Girls Club if that's what, it sounds like that's what the direction of council is going. So.
I mean, to be clear, I think what we want is to direct staff to write a resolution on that, bring it to us in two weeks, because that'll be our next, uh, regular meeting. Is that, do we have a weird month this year, this month? Uh, whatever the next regular meeting is, I don't know. I think there are only four in my meetings. Um, so I it sounds like we've got at least a majority of council that's willing to entertain a resolution reallocating those funds to, uh, Boys and Girls Club. Ms. Blaisdell, your light was on. Do you want to, are you?
I mean, the one thing that I guess I was on the teeter totter, and then last week Kelton and Harpster said something about the location and how many kids um, around Boys and Girls Club, how it affects and the schools, and that was my deciding factor. So, um, I'm with Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Ross, I know you made your statement last week. Do you have one this week or are you good? I don't want to put you on if you're not.
I, you know, um, it it like I said, my my kids have been part of the Boys and Girls Club. Um, they were mentored, they learned, uh, while they were in Boys and Girls Club. It's a great pro- program. Um, however, I do believe that the MLK has for some time needed attention. And, um, it's a historical site to, um, and I I feel I would be a disservice to the community that continues to use that facility. I I stand with supporting the MLK, um, upgrades.
I appreciate that. So so with that, uh, staff, do you have direction? Okay, and I think as you weigh the options, please can continue to provide us the, uh, like the breakdown of dollar value. So to your point, it shows that we're not ripping all allocation from MLK. Were we to decide this clearly? Uh, just to point out, we have not decided this position. It's just something we're discussing and requesting staff to bring forward. Um, with that, I see no further lights. Uh, we do have, uh, need for item number thirteen, executive session. We've been requested a bathroom break, hopefully, uh, the three to four minutes. If we end on seven, we'll do three. Uh, we'll just call it three minutes. Uh, so we'll start executive session at nine ten. The issue is, uh, public, uh, performance of a public employee under R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, subsection G. It's list listed for fifteen minutes and, uh, we will take a quick break and then we will go back to executive session. We'll be back at nine twenty-five. Either I will extend and, you know, we'll put the over-under on that or, uh, we'll end there. Thank you. Thank you.
It is now 9:24, almost 9:25. We're going to extend another 15 minutes to 9:40. Thank you.
Thank you.